So we fully anticipate, given that response, we will run through that allocation that we made. Uh, but yes, we didn't want to make it, uh, as they first come, first serve and whoever got in the application first. Want to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to send in their application. But given that volume, we understand and that's what we agreed to on Friday, that we will most surely run through that, all those resources in this first class.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? Uh, seeing none, call for the question. Councilmember Gardner. Councilmember Gardner?
No, no.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
No.
Councilmember Bergen?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber?
No.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yes.
Mayor Kaufman? Uh, I would vote yes, but it's already five-four. Right, if you want. Uh, I vote yes. Um, eleven A passes with councilmembers Bergen, Burden, Gardner, and Gruber voting no. Let's see. What did that? Clerk please read the title of item number eleven B. Consideration of an ordinance for introduction of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, amending section seventeen dash twenty of the city code of the City of Aurora, Colorado, the designation of the flood plan, flood plan administrator. Motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Gruber?
Move to approve eleven D. Second.
It's been moved, uh, by Councilmember Gruber, seconded by Councilmember Coons to approve eleven D. Um, discussion? I see none, call for the question. Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Clerk, now please read the title of item number eleven C. Yes, sir. Uh, consideration of an ordinance for introduction of the City Council of the City of Aurora, Colorado, fireworks department, twenty seventeen dash oh eight, impact review, and ordinance amendment due to typographical error in section B eight, changing the date from June thirteenth to June fourth. Mayor, motion to approve eleven C? It's been moved by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember.
Second.
Uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, uh, to approve item number, um, eleven C, uh, discussion? Uh, seeing none, call for the question. Councilmember Morio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Burden?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Eleven D passes unanimously. Clerk, now please read the title of item number, uh, twelve A. Yes, reconsideration of resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. Review of the powers granted to the city manager by resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two. The powers granted to the city manager which are set forth in the chapter declarations are remain in place until a majority of the council votes to end the declaration.
Mayor.
Staff, uh, uh, Councilmember Gruber?
I move to extend the powers to the city manager in accordance to resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-two.
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Gardner. Okay, Councilmember Gardner, um, discussion? Uh, seeing none, staff presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that, uh, I'm glad the thing is being extended, uh, from the standpoint that as the governor begins to roll back or ease on some of the restrictions we face, we're moving into the recovery phase also, and I think, uh, in order to be able to implement some of the, uh, recovery or reopening aspects that we'll have, it may be necessary to exercise some of the power that that, uh, that declaration gives, so, um, I think it will be beneficial to extend it.
Uh, very well, further discussion? Uh, seeing none, call for the question. Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously. Clerk, please read the title of thirteen A. Yes. Consideration to appoint one member to the Art and Public Places Commission. Motion?
Fair.
Um.
First.
Oh, Councilmember Burden. Uh, seconded by Councilmember, who, Councilmember Coons, uh, discussion?
Uh. I move to appoint Vanessa Frazier, who is from Ward three, to the Art and Public Places Commission.
Okay, we can vote on that? No, we don't vote on that.
Yeah.
Third, okay, okay, then move second, uh, further discussion on thirteen A? Uh, seeing none, call for the question. And there's, for the record, I didn't catch the second, it was, uh, Councilmember Berg, Bergen who made, uh, Burden's who made the motion, who seconded? Burden's, uh, Councilmember Coons. Councilmember Coons, okay, great. Councilmember Morio?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
And Councilmember Burden?
Yes.
Thirteen A is approved unanimously. Now, would the clerk now please read the title of thirteen B? Consideration to reappoint two members to the open space board.
Mayor.
Motion, Councilmember Gruber?
Mayor, I move to, um, appoint, uh, Mrs. Anna Kress and Mr. Tom Isaacson to the open spaces board.
The second? And seconded by, okay, Councilmember Bergen, um, discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Coons.
Uh, so just in looking at the list of folks that we have, um, I'm glad to see that we're going to be having some representation from Ward one with Ms. Susan Kress being appointed. Um, I do want us to do what we can to get folks from Ward three and four, as there are none currently on the open space board.
Further discussion? Seeing none, call for the question. Councilmember Bergen?
Yes.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Mayor Kaufman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Gruber?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Burden?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yeah.
Thirteen B is approved unanimously.
Mayor, please.
Uh, who is that, I'm sorry?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Hi, um, I apologize, I am looking at the different numbers for the agenda, but I just want to make sure, um, on the original, I was looking at the reconsiderations and call-ups were before the general. What?
I'm sorry. I think I do right. Okay, uh, I tell you what, if, uh, if there's no opposition, uh, let's, let's, uh, finish, uh, thirteen C and go back to, uh, twelve A.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Call-up of the Murphy Creek East application. Um, it was administratively approved just two weeks ago. I have received, and I'm sure the council has as well, um, dozens of emails since the fall, um, wanting a public hearing. There were different issues ranging from, um, the lighting in, in the pocket park and where that is, um, some drainage of, of who's responsible, and while some of the issues were addressed in the second submission, there were also some concerns, um, of like a technical, um, information in the, the third submission, and just some overall concerns from the Murphy Creek residents. So with that, um, and a continual call for, for public hearings. For the last several months, I'm, I'm asking for support to have a public hearing on the Mercy Creek Administrative Approval Application.
So, let, let me be, um, clear on this, um, what, you're, you're asking for a vote by city councilor, am I correct?
Yes, just for the call-up to have a public hearing. So I'm not going to go into like, you know, we still have to dive into some of the issues if we do have a public hearing, of the outcome for that, but I'm just calling it up to have a public hearing due to the extreme public interest in that area where that public hearing. Mayor?
Councilmember Bergen?
I just, is, I, I don't know if we have Legal still on, on the line, uh.
Yes, Dan is, Dan is on the line.
Okay, so I thought when, when someone did a call-up that you had to have new information, but a public hearing is not new information, that's a request, so I just want to get clarification from Legal, please.
Yes.
If I.
If I could ask Legal?
And, and what you need is, is exactly what was presented, you have a, a number of issues that would be adding information, uh, to the public hearing definitely before planning and zoning. Okay, but I thought you had to have new information from, about the application, not, not that someone else wants to, you know, have public input. I thought you had to have new information that something completely has changed with the application. Yeah. That's actually a reconsideration, but, but the call-up, the, the items that were articulated by the Mayor Pro Tem would be sufficient to allow a call-up. Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember, uh, I mean, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, and I think Councilmember Bergen, um, got that from our city attorney, but I'm doing a call-up, the standard that Councilmember Bergen, um, just laid out, that would be if it was a reconsideration. So a call-up is completely different from a reconsideration where you would need more information. A call-up is just essentially instead of having it stand as an administrative approval, I'm calling it up, asking for a public hearing.
Further discussion? And Mayor, this is Steve, and Dan can chime in if I'm wrong, but I believe we need a motion to have the call-up, and, uh, Dan, do we need a date certain for when this will come back?
Yes, and I, I think there has to be a publication, so I don't think it'll be the next meeting, it'll be the meeting following that to give us enough time to get it published and, and notice.
Yes, Mayor?
Uh, Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes, um, I did check with, with staff ahead of time on the rules of that, there needs to be that notice, that public posting, um, that there would be a public hearing if we have the, the support tonight, so, um, it couldn't be the next meeting because there wouldn't be enough time for that, so we're looking at a May timeframe based on the staff's schedule. Um, and then I'm just going to give one more ask, again, you know, this isn't weighing in one way or the other on a position that would be taken during a public hearing, but given a lot of the, the requests of the constituents, especially during a time when, um, people aren't feeling as engaged in our process, I really hope that if it's virtually that we can, can give our constituents that opportunity to get more information and to have this public hearing, so I, I hope that I can get that support for that tonight. So I move for, um, the call-up for the Murphy Creek East application.
Second, this is Councilmember Morio.
Thank you.
And just for the record, it would be for May eighteenth, that is the second council meeting in, uh, in May. Oh, good, uh, Dan, uh, um, there, we, then we would vote on it, am I correct? After the public hearing?
No.
Yeah, for this, what you're doing is saying in public, this, this motion is dependent on public hearing, you'll actually vote on, on the zoning itself on the eighteenth.
So already we're going to be voting on this zoning?
So, so this is all, can, the vote right now is only setting the public hearing. The vote on the eighteenth will actually be approving the zoning or not.
So we will be doing that irrespective of whether, uh, 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 Mayor Pro Tem Johnson passes?
No.
No. It's a subtle, if, if, if her, her motion doesn't pass, then it's a sort of question. And, and we, and we don't, we, we, it doesn't come to council.
That's correct, if, 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 you don't get them, if there isn't a majority that vote for having the public hearing, this was an administrative decision, so the director's decision will stand.
I see. Okay, Councilmember Burden?
Thank you, I was just going to say that, it's already been administratively approved. Staff at our planning department is already approved. It's already been approved.
That's correct. Uh, further questions, uh, comments? Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, so same thing, um, so it's already been administratively approved, um, it has met all the, uh, all the requirements for code and for zoning, it conforms with our, our current code and zoning, and so I guess, I'm having a difficult time because I would like to support Mayor Pro, um, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson for the call-up, but I don't, I don't understand the call-up because it, they've done everything they're supposed to do legally, and so what would change, I guess is my question.
Mayor?
Yes, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Um, I don't want to get too into like what I would do for reconsideration, um, with giving the, the different details, I want to stay on our, our topic of the reasons for a call-up, and it really is that, that public interest. Um, there was actually a huge effort, um, by a lot of Murphy Creek residents to have, have more public hearings and meetings about this prior to the administrative approval. Um, there was a meeting last year by the applicant, um, but there wasn't, there wasn't anything beyond that, so the reason for this, this call-up, yes, um, there was that administrative approval, um, for meeting from the requirements of the, the U D O, that staff faced some U D O requirements so that they can do that, but it is within, um, also the U D O, um, realm of, of call-ups that if there is that, that public interest, to have a public meeting, that it's appropriate to, to call that up, so it's for those reasons, I'm calling it up.
Further discussion?
I'm, I'm struggling with this as well, it's gone through the process, the, the, I'm not even certain it's in the same metro district, so people that, that may be adjacent to the development that aren't going to be part of the development are saying they don't want the landowner to, to be able to exercise the rights that the city has already said he has the rights, rights to exercise. Uh, the City of Aurora has a very bad reputation on our ability to, um, provide certainty, uh, uh, when it comes to reviews, when it comes to, um, the processes and defined. Uh, I know the city manager is working very hard, uh, to fix that, but this is another case where someone has gone through all of the wickets, gotten all of the approvals, and then people who are outside of the process say that, and they were included in the original, I mean, the opportunity was there, is, is what I just heard, but now they want to come in and say, you know what, I don't think I want to, with the guys doing down the street, I don't think I want that to happen, I'm struggling with, you know, what, I, if they were, I, I'm just struggling as to the, the land use rights of the, of the person who submitted the application.
Further, further discussion, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Um, again, I don't want to get into all of the weeds of, um, some of the concerns the residents have, um, I'll, I'll mention a few. Um, there was a, a light that was supposed to be in this new pocket park that's connected to it. Um, there was discussion, well, there already have a, a light nearby, so will it do that? But there, there wasn't a formal, like, let residents know, and then it wasn't rolled into the final application. There is, I serve on the, um, the, the boards, the M C H D that deals with, with flooding and different liabilities, and, um, the district for that had some, um, commitment that it was going to be made, but it wasn't a formal process, so there's, there's things that are legitimate reasons, but I just, I'm asking that we have that conversation in a public hearing setting. My ask tonight, and we don't always do these regularly, is for a call-up due to the overwhelming amount of contacts I've received from my constituents for more than one meeting that they had with the applicant last year to address these issues, to get more information. They have been calling for this since, I've had emails since October for a public hearing. It hasn't happened since that one meeting in the summer, so due to that, I'm, I'm asking for the call-up, and then in the public hearing, we can talk about the different merits and, and reasons that people support or don't support.
Further, further discussion, Councilmember Burden?
Thank you. Here, I, I'm struggling with, people say that you've, you've had requests since, would you say, October? Have any of them called the developer? I can't imagine a light here, a light there, to maybe kill this whole process. Yep, I, I feel like developers would talk to you, and you can talk to them, or, or developers would, would talk to a group that went to him and worked that out, instead of calling it up and waiting for months and costing tonnes money, you know, and, and making them come to another hearing. I, I just can't see it, because it's already been approved. Like Dave said, it's already jumped through all the hoops. Our planning department is tough, and I hear that all the time, they're really tough. And if it's just a matter of a light here, a light there, or some, some other thing, I feel like the developer would sit down and talk to them and work it out without going through all this call-up business and, and having to come, and they have to bring their architects and their landscapers, and all that costs a lot of money. It, the people just don't come to the city building and spend time without being paid, so it, it's just, I, I think it can be solved without having to be called up.
Mayor, may I?
Further discussion, Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes, I know I, I don't want to focus on just this light, I think that is one of many examples that are saying, so I just want to clarify, it's not just about a light, it's about neighbors who have some significant concerns, and opportunity which is in their right to have a public hearing on it. There wasn't one beforehand, there was another community meeting, and that's, that's why we're, we're having this. We have to do a balance of not just what the developer wants, but also considering the neighborhood and our, our city, and a public hearing is something where we can at least get this all out, have that opportunity for both sides to hear, to say that publicly, that's why I'm doing the call. But there are many significant issues.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've been dealing with the Murphy Creek, um, Lennar development for, well, I, I guess for over a year, um, had a public hearing, you know, they've changed their application so that it meets all the requirements, no waivers, and I, I, I just have a hard time with this one because we just keep giving the, the developer the runaround, they've, they've tried to meet with Creek residents, they've, you know, there was, there was no give on, on anything that they were going to do. But now they went through and, and changed their, their application so that it meets all of our requirements, and now we're just going to delay them again and again and again. Um, I think someone said earlier, we're, this is really bad precedent for, you know, those developers that are investing their money in our communities and have, are turning the right way with meeting all the standards, and then we just, we just keep delaying them, so I, I, I don't, I'm sorry, but I don't think I can support the call-up, I'm very sorry.
Further, further comments? Um, seeing none, call for the question? On the call-up? On the call-up? Yeah. Councilmember Coons?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergen?
No.
Councilmember Burden?
No.
Councilmember Gruber?
No.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes.
Councilmember Morio?
Yeah.
No. The motion fails with Mayor Kaufman, Councilmember Bergen, Councilmember Burden, Councilmember Gardner, and Councilmember Gruber voting no. Where are we going? Um, report, uh, Councilmember Morio?
Uh, yes, um, my next town hall is going to be this Thursday, uh, from six thirty, it's going to be hosted virtually on Webex, um, you can go to, uh, my Facebook page, the information is there. Um, similarly, you can email me, um, and I am happy to share or email the link. It's at Morio for Aurora, it's the Facebook page, um, and we're going to be talking, um, about economic justice in the time of COVID and having a conversation about what that looks like, um, having that resource dialogue, and I'll be joined by Omar Montgomery, who is a president of, and that will be the Aurora tractor of our branch of end of life, so I hope for you all to be there, if you guys need help figuring out how to set up Webex, um, please feel free to call me or shoot me an email, um, and have. or shoot me an email, and I'd be happy to help you as much as I can, and I'd ask to be the same, to literally walk you through that process, because I think it's really important to stay informed and connected and letting you know how I can support connecting to the social.
Thank you. Councilmember Lawson? Councilmember Lawson?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I don't have any reports.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Burden?
Yes, thank you. I will just say I don't know about the May ward meeting. If we do have it, it'll be at the Tin Cup, but I'm afraid you're going to have to stay tuned, see if we're allowed to get out and if so, how many. So I don't have a report for you on the ward meeting, but I would like to say, please be safe and stay inside when you can. I am an advocate for opening up as soon as possible, as soon as we safely can. I know people need jobs, they need to take care of their families, so I want to open up as soon as possible. So stay safe, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Councilmember, you're muted.
Councilmember Gardner?
Curtis, you're muted.
Okay, sorry about that. A couple things I want to talk about. First, I've mentioned P P for our first responders a lot in Aurora, it's been a really important issue, just to make sure those folks have the resources they need. So I wanted to give people a thank you. So we've got a couple of home improvement stores here in Aurora donate items, the A P D and Aurora Fire, which is awesome. And then just this past weekend, I had the opportunity to visit a couple of different fire stations after a constituent gave me 50 N 95 masks, as well as I had 75 hand-sewn masks that I was able to deliver. And they were in some fun patterns, and there were some ladybug ones for the kids, and that was really neat to be able to do. I just want to extend my thank you to constituents that passed on those resources as well as to the home improvement stores that made those donations. I think that's really great to see the community stepping up. Another thing I want to mention, it started today, but it's running through the end of the week. The town center in Aurora is hosting a food drive on behalf of Salvation Army in Aurora. It's every day from 12 to 4:00, I guess tomorrow, Tuesday through Friday. They're accepting non-perishable food items. If you look at my Facebook page, I do have a link to the full list of what they're accepting, but canned goods and macaroni and cheese and all those kinds of non-perishable things would be great. And then lastly, just a reminder, my COVID resource page is available, they're adding new resources all the time. This week, we were able to add some things about the steps people should take there out of a job, and then also some F A Qs as far as the economic impact payments, payments that were received. And many more people in Aurora will begin to receive those via physical check over the next several weeks, so they've got the information on there. So please check that out, and that's all for me.
Councilmember Gruber?
Want to thank everybody who sent their application in for our grant program. As you heard earlier, we had, we've had over 900 people, so that's, and we only had a million dollars, so that's over four times the amount of money that we have available. The city's going to do our best to fill those, those requests. And then again, we're going to continue to try to get additional money from, you know, we're going to try to get additional money. There's money allocated down to the state, and there's money allocated to Denver, but neither, you know, obviously Denver's got their money and the state money, from what we understand, is not going to trickle down to the city. So we're still struggling. If we do get more money, we want to make that available. I also want to point out that metro districts continue to be a big issue. We talked about it during study session. I want to remind people to have a online meeting on April 30th to go over metro districts, what they mean, and to allow you to ask questions. Please check social media on Twitter, Facebook, and Nextdoor for more information on how to access those meetings. We hope to answer all your questions. Mayor, you're muted.
Councilmember Bergen?
Thank you, Mayor. Just also want to say to everybody, continue to please practice safe, social distancing, and take care of yourselves. I wanted to also thank High Point Church, they're one of the churches that is helping with Mark Shaker's Colorado restaurant response to COVID, and they will be doing, or distributing meals every day, every seven days a week, starting on April 23rd. So these restaurants are donating their food and services too. And they will also, they have volunteers currently lined up, and they will also be reaching out to the nursing homes in our area. And so we want to thank High Point Church for stepping up and helping our community.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mayor Proten Johnson?
Thank you. I just wanted to invite everyone who can make it this Wednesday, 1 o'clock to 1:45 PM on Zoom, please join me with Dr. Desiree Crowe and her husband Congressman Crowe on celebrating Earth Day, 50th anniversary of Earth Day. So they will be taking all types of questions on public land protection, land and water conservation fund, clean energy, and be able to really have a question and answer to. I have that on my Facebook, Nicole Johnson for Aurora. And then Councilmember Gruber said, very excited about the metro district meeting, and that's at 6:00 PM on Thursday at night. Again, video presentation with our staff. We will have some in-person meetings eventually, but I'll have that on my Facebook and Twitter as well. So I hope to see you virtually this week. Thanks.
Councilmember Coons?
Hello, I am having my town hall online tomorrow at 6:30 PM. The WebEx link is already up on the city's website, and then there's also an event on my Facebook page to let folks connect either through WebEx or through Facebook Live. We will have staff present to talk about housing and homelessness issues, as well as folks from Tri-County Health to answer questions about community services, to talk about how those services are operating in light of COVID. And then I will also be giving some additional updates and information about what staff are doing and how some city programs, including libraries and the history museum, are making sure that folks can continue to have access to content and information while they're physically close. And then I would like to, the community center for agreeing to be the distribution location in Ward 5 for the meal program that is being put on by Mark Shaker and several nonprofits.
Councilmember Marcano?
Yes, thank you. So first, I want to thank everybody for doing their part to flatten our curve here, it's made a really big difference. And I want to stress that we continue to take this seriously, and the governor's looking at easing some of the procedures that are going to place at the end of the month. So just to keep an eye out for that. Our May meeting is going to be on Thursday, the 21st at 6:30, and I think just out of an abundance of caution, we're going to do it on WebEx again. We had a really great presentation at the last meeting, and that is available both on, I believe, the city website, aurorgov.org, and at Marcano for Aurora on Facebook. So check it out, being in the meeting. And yeah, just stay safe, and we'll talk to you all soon.
This is Mayor Mike Hoffman. First of all, a shout out to friends of St. Andrews at 1525 Dow Street. I was up at their location today, providing meals to the homeless, and I think that they would be a great distribution center as well for the program that we're working on in terms of providing meals to underserved populations. I also want to encourage people, obviously, to be as safe as you possibly can during this time with the COVID-19, but we can also be safe and we can support our restaurants through carryout, through delivery. I want to really encourage you, they're suffering, and they're going to be, I think, some of the longest in terms of social distancing requirements in this community, you know, based on public health measures. And so, but if you could meet the mayor's challenge and go to one of our smaller restaurants at least once a week for delivery or takeout, I think that'd be great, as well as our small retailers that are going to be the hardest hit during this crisis. And so stay safe.